May Council come to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, would you please call the roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
Brainerhorst.
Here.
Banstrup.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Spoor.
Here.
Karlston and Dack.
Alright, so Mandy just informed me we're having some internet issues and so maybe if you're online, you may not be able to see the presentation, but if you are attending via the telephone, you will be able to provide verbal comments during the dedicated public forums and public hearings. I would also request that you would keep your microphones and telephones on mute until the time at which you want to speak. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
Banstrup, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Banstrup.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Motion passed. So in the back of the room, we have a fine looking group of people that we want to recognize tonight. If you've been paying attention to what we've been doing as a council for the last six weeks at least, maybe eight weeks, been a lot of discussion about the ambulance becoming a city department. A lot of work's been done over the last while and that happened as of July 1st. So we just wanted to take a minute to welcome all of you guys. Thank you for your service to the ambulance service for, there's a lot of years of service up there. So thank you for the service that you've given to the ambulance over these years and we're excited to be, have the ambulance be part of the city from here on out. We look forward for working with all of you guys to keep the ambulance service, the great service that it is. And so we just wanted to say a word of welcome to working for the city of Pella. So thanks for coming tonight and welcome. And there's a list on the board, I won't go through every name, but there's a list on the board of all the people. It looks like a good percentage of them are here tonight. So we appreciate you coming, coming out so we can welcome you and recognize you. Anybody else want to make any comments?
Hope that you use it.
But if you do, be assured you get great service. You do need it. Okay? Thank you again. So we'll move on. So we're to the point of a public forum. Anyone wishing to address council regarding any agenda item? Ask you to please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Mayor, council member, good evening. I'm Gina Sales, 209 North Lincoln Street, I'm Ms. Sharon. We also own 717 Main Street here. And we are on the agenda tonight for policy and planning on page 145. My husband's not here tonight because people's hair keeps growing and he's just keep cutting it off. So on behalf of him, we actually really want to thank you for the past 14 months of your diligence and the city staff and helping us navigate through the challenges with the city code with parking. And it means a lot to us that you continue to dedicate your time and energy to helping small business owners when they find themselves in a dilemma, especially with the city code. And we actually really look forward to the future of collaboration as we plow through. And as you know, that's Room Barber Lounge, but also known as Old City Hall. So as we look at renovating the alley and making downtown continuing to be a great place to be, we really do appreciate and why didn't want to miss the opportunity to thank you, especially when an issue takes a longer time than maybe many people would like, myself included. It has been, meant a lot to us that I'm back on the agenda tonight and I really do appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Brainerhorst.
Spoor.
Spoor, any discussion?
I just had a couple of questions. Probably either Mike or Gerald would be on that. On the Historic Preservation Commission, is the state still looking at our ordinance to see whether it, how long has the, have they had it to look at it?
Well, they've had to turn over a few people up to the state and that was unforeseeable, but they've had it now several times.
Okay. And then the second question I had was on the CDC about that small tower situation that evidently there were some concerns with the CDC with the ordinance that we passed to, or I wonder if you could elaborate on that.
Which small tower?
The small cell tower ordinance.
Oh, they were concerned about having the towers on the main park area and adjacent parks. The ordinance does not allow that. Only the city council can override the ordinance and approve those. So any sighting that potentially comes before the city of Pella with a cell tower close to a park will have to have both of the city council approval.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Alright, we'll vote on the motion. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Banstrup.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, we will move into a public hearing to consider rezoning application for 2073 Old Highway 163. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to refer the council to the big board for a brief presentation on this item and for those following at home, I'm on slide number three this evening. And this request comes to us this evening from Pella Business Systems and specifically what they're requesting is to rezone the property located at 2073 Old Highway 163 from community commercial, which is commonly referred to as the acronym CC to limited light industrial, which is M1. And the property that we're talking about here is the yellow highlighted area listed up here, shown on the big board. Now just to orientate, this is Old Highway 163, exit 40 is located right here on Highway 163 and all of it forward would be located right in this vicinity of the map extended down. Now ultimately, what the applicant is proposing to do is construct a storage and warehousing facility on the property. The property is currently vacant, as you can see up on the board as well. So Mandy, let's go ahead please. Now, it's very important now when we talk about tonight's rezoning that this is a conditional rezoning and specifically the applicant has voluntarily agreed to limited uses that would normally be associated with an M1 type zoning district. But we do have a description of the M1 zoning district up here on the board, as well as a picture of the current zoning that is located up here. So as you can see by and large, there is CC zone immediately around here. Now, if you were to drive out on Old Highway 163, even though it is community commercial zoning, there is a mixture of uses, including some industrial, residential, and commercial uses that are located on the road currently. We also do have M1 zoning that is located fairly close to the property as well for consideration. So let's go ahead, please. Mandy? Now, anytime we reconsider or consider a zoning action, it's always important to review what the comprehensive plan identifies the area as well. And there's a couple of different indexes in the comprehensive plan that we tend to look at when we consider a rezoning application. One of them is the future use land map that does identify this site as general industrial in the future. In addition, we also want to take a strong look at the land use compatibility matrix as well. As you can see, by and large, when we look at the proposed M1 zoning district, it's fairly compatible with areas out here. The exception would be low density residential. And hence, when we talk about the conflicts, conflicts or potential future conflicts with low density residential, we talk about the conditional rezoning. That is the reason for the conditions that we will be discussing this evening. So with that, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, if you recall, we stated that there could be future conflicts if residential was constructed in this, in this area. And as a result, what is being proposed by the applicant is a limited number of uses for what is traditionally associated with the M1 zoning district. And generally, those uses that are identified in this ordinance are compatible for residential uses. In addition, the applicant has also voluntarily agreed to obtain a design permit from the Community Development Committee for any buildings that front onto Old Highway 163 or that would have visibility from the public, from the public right away. Let's go ahead. Mandy? Now, as far as the planning and zoning commission, if they did consider this proposed ordinance at their June 27th meeting and they did approve the conditional rezoning request on unanimous vote as well, staff is also in agreement with the PNC recommendation this evening. And we also believe that the conditions associated with this request adequately address any potential land use conflicts in the future of residential property. And as a result, Mr. Mayor, we are requesting approval of the rezoning request as presented this evening. In addition, we would like to say that the applicant has made a request to waive the second and third readings of the ordinance as well. So with that, that concludes our presentation this evening. Anyone have to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
Alright, thank you. Mike, Mandy, any written comments received?
The only written comment was the one to waive the second and third readings.
Okay. Counsel, any comments?
Do we have any precedent recently of zoning, changing zoning on something that isn't directly abutting that zoning?
I bet, Mandy, if we can go back, as far as any type of areas that we've had, if we can go back to the zoning app, please. Now, as far as there, I'd be remiss, we did review it for spot zoning on the matter and we believe, I think the takeaway, Jerry, from the city attorney on the matter was because there is M1 zoning in the, in the area that's fairly close and it was not, did not constitute spot zoning. Is that correct?
Correct. It's an approximate M1 zone and the existing land uses abutting the property quantify as industrial.
That was, that was the analysis. Now, I'm trying to think of some of the other rezonings that we've done that weren't necessarily. I'd have to go back and take a look at that. We'd be more happy to provide that information to counsel. I'm trying to think offhand and it's dangerous doing that offhand.
I can't think of any that we've, like, we've done several where it's been adjacent that we just rezoned similar, but I couldn't think of any that we kind of skipped some properties, but.
The two that I'm thinking of, well, actually, the one that I'm thinking of was also a conditional request, but I wanted to go back and check that, make sure that we do have the issue that's fairly similar. But it was, the one that I am thinking on, it was another conditional use obstruction as well.
And there, there haven't been any comments from any of the adjacent property owners?
Jerry?
We did have one person speak at the planning and zoning commission, basically not in opposition to the project. Self-storage is pretty benign as a use, but did complain about potential traffic down Old Highway 163 and that currently a lot of semis and trucks get stuck down the other end and have to U-turn in their property.
Alright, anything else, counsel? Okay, any oral comments from a member of the public? Alright, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
DeYoung, Hopkins, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Banstrup.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to the ordinance. Ordinance number 1013 entitled an ordinance amending the zoning, ordinance of the city of Pella, Iowa by conditionally amending the boundaries of the M1 district to include the property legally described in Exhibit A and directing the planning and zoning director to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map. Anything to add, Mike?
No, sir.
Can I get a motion for approval?
First place on first reading.
DeYoung, Hopkins, any discussion?
I guess I'll just reiterate what Dave said a little bit. I'm not opposed to it, but if there's any example of spot zoning, if you just look at that blob of orange that will be, this would probably jump out as one, you know, in my view anyway.
It could be it, you know, basic. And when we looked at spot zoning, one of the reviews is to looking to see if there's anything close by. And depending on the adjacency, it was deemed that that was the M1. And then also with us to address the questions on, on the use. This is a conditional rezoning. The uses are basically self-storage and uses that would be compatible with residential out there as well. Correct, Jerry?
That is correct. The only use is self-storage.
You've got a body shop and metalist manufacturing down there.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we'll vote on the motion for approval. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Banstrup.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Now moved to waive the second and third readings.
Okay, motion by Banstrup, ordered by Spoor to waive second, third, and readings. Is there any discussion? Alright, we'll vote on that motion. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Banstrup.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Motion passed.
Moved to adopt.
Support.
DeYoung, Brainerhorst, motion to adopt ordinance number 1013. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Brainerhorst.
Yes.
Banstrup.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spoor.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, funding requests from the 175th Pella Celebration. Please mute your telephone or computer if you're online. Thank you. Funding requests from the 175th Pella Celebration. Benny, Mike?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, and I believe we have Ms. Kristi Leonard and Ms. Jessie Boss in attendance this evening to talk about the celebration.
So thank you for your time. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you to share our proposal and subsequent request. We, Jessie and I, and Ann Frost, and Terri Boss have made up the 175th Celebration, Pella Celebration Community Committee, excuse me. And we are excited that this is 175 years of Pella. And we want to help celebrate that with the entire community. And as such, we've come together as a group, formed a committee, and have put together a plan of a several day festival festivities and celebration for our community. We want to see this somewhat as a homecoming for those who currently live here and for those to come back and enjoy the community and, and connect with old friends and family and such. And so we have come together, put together a plan, thought about what these several days could look like. We have a good mix of events. We have a good mix of audiences and wanted to share what that looks like. Like I said, subsequently, we're requesting funding for you, from you. So you can see, we even have some branding going on already. We're excited about that. 175th, 175 years. And really want to celebrate the concept of Haselik. That is the Dutch term for cozy. And we really want these next, these few days of this event and these festivities to be cozy and that social connection. We want to bring the people of Pella together, again, those who currently live here and those who are coming back and connect many generations with that. And so what we're looking at is August 4th through 6th. We would like to, okay, August 4th through 6th, Pella Historical will hold their noon book club as they typically do in the Sculte Garden. And then the focus of their reading material beyond Haselik and other readings that deal with happiness. And again, that cozy feeling. We want people to read about what that is and to understand and grasp that concept and then live it out in some of our further events. And there will be time for discussion after this book read. Also, then on that Thursday night, an event called The Taste of Pella we want to have. And this would be at the Pella Historical Sculte Church in the evening with some of their ancillary locations we use as well for reception area. This would be a free event and we want to limit the capacity to 50 people. And we will invite Haselik and Nederlanders to sell and serve their own beverages. And then the cost of The Taste of Pella would include a sampling plate. We're going to have a Central College cater this and give a sampling of many different tastes of Pella and what some of the Dutch foods are. And so we want to have that available. It's an opportunity just to have a reception, an opportunity to have conversation. But the highlight of that evening then is a panel, a generational panel of folks that have connections to Pella. Why are they here? Why did they stay here? What means, what does Haselik mean to them? What does the social connection mean to them here in the Pella community? And we want that generational panel to be someone of age 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, 70, 80, at least three, maybe four people on this panel to have conversation about what has their perspective been of the community along the ages. And so we need to compare and hear different thoughts of Pella and different perceptions of Pella throughout the ages. And so that's The Taste of Pella. So sampling plates and beverages, bringing on, you'll notice, like I said, Nederlanders and Haselik to collaborate with us. So we bring more, more folks to the table. It's all about collaboration. And the cost of The Taste of Pella would be about 850 to 1250. And the rental donation of the Sculte Church would be $200. So there's some of the pieces of the foundation of the money request. Pass it, Jessie.
Yeah, just echoing Kristi, thank you so much for having us here today. We're excited to talk about what we have up our sleeves. Looking at Friday's activities then, it will be sort of, it's, it's important to celebrate this coziness, this Haselik, but it is 175 years. So we want to celebrate the history aspect as well. So Friday's activities would look like a sort of Dominie Day. Perhaps we'd have mayor come and give a proclamation about how this is the Dominie Day. We've already asked the town crier and the burgomaster to make an appearance. Maybe just a miniature processional or parade, the Duchess is performing, things like that, whether that's on the Tuotoren or in Sculte Gardens, location TBD. And then along with that, we would like to have the Sculte House open, Pella Historical, having it open during regular hours, but opening it up for free for our visitors. Having Tom and Wendy Vanderwell come and be the Dominie and Maria and telling people the story of Pella. I mean, this house, it was built in 1848, so a year after Pella was founded, and it is, besides Pella Cabin, of course, the oldest still surviving building in Pella. So we are excited about that aspect as well. The cost for that would primarily just be the, a fee to sponsor, the Sculte House being open for any and all visitors to come through at no cost to them. And then looking at Saturday's activities, Pella Historical has always had our carumis celebration the first weekend of August, so we're excited to be bundling that along with this. It's a Dutch children's festival and we would hold it as normal, offering sweets and snacks and games, book readings, things like that. But we've really put a focus on the 175, the history, the how long have we been here and how can we make that palatable and interesting to children? Some educational aspects as well. So that is Saturday's activities. And yeah, we would love to make this a historical cozy, family weekend at low cost to visitors and people who live here alike.
So I've shared a couple pieces of the cost with you. A few more things. We would like to have some banners with our 175th Celebration logo on them around the town. Those would be $250 to $750. Add on social media to let our followers of Pella Historical, Pella Wellness Consortium and to visit Pella and know about the homecoming celebration, approximately $500. Flyers and posters for the event, approximately $500. And really, the value of all of this is approximately 7,500. When you look at the donations of, whether it be discounts on drinks from Nederlanders and from the Selic, whether it be from the Pella Historical Society with the donation of their space and such. So the value is about $7,500. We're requesting $5,000 from the city to help put this on and help this celebration happen in a grandiose way and in a great fashion. The caveat to that, I do want to say, any money that we don't use, one, we'll keep track on a spreadsheet of exactly where that money goes to whom and how much. But what we don't use, we'll definitely be giving back to the city. We'll be very frugal with our funds and very knowledgeable on where that goes and try to find the best heels. But we want to put something on that's great, great, that our community looks forward to and people come back for, not just those who are here. So again, very collaborative, Pella Wellness Consortium, Pella Historical Society, Visit Pella. We want to help make this community great, even more great, and celebrate. With that, I'll ask you another question.
I did want to add something to. I forgot to mention, for Friday's activities, we're collaborating with the Downtown Business District as well. So businesses will hopefully benefit from this too. It is their first Fridays, but they're sort of rebranding to the Downtown After Dark. So along with Friday's Dominie Day and Historical Celebration will be a benefit to the businesses to stay open later. And like Kristi said, this really is all about collaboration and making sure that there's events for both adults, children, young people, spanning the age groups.
The question that comes to my mind is, is 30 days enough time to market this?
So for Pella Historical's events, we usually market things about 30 days ahead of time. So assuming we start ASAP, push social media hard. And we really find that posters all over town honestly is a huge way to get people involved, especially because this is a community celebration. Hopefully visitors will, will come and visit as well, or people who return after having been away from Pella for a while. But I, I believe 30 days is enough with the proper materials.
I can also add, the Pella Wellness Consortium plans to be at Thursdays in Pella on July 14th and have a table to help promote this.
We've also seen, I don't know if you've been on social media, but there's lots of people asking questions on different Pella Historical's things. Maybe Historic Pella Trust has seen some of those too. But is there going to be some sort of celebration? It's 175. So we have seen a lot of people sort of asking for something like this as well.
Any other questions for?
I think it's a great idea. It's just only a little over 28 bucks a year, so.
Seems like a good investment.
The only other question I have is kind of a pop quiz. We talked about this way earlier. What do you call 175th Celebration?
Don Drans Bicentennial?
What was that?
Don Drans Bicentennial?
That's one of them that's kind of inaccurate. The demi semi septcentennial.
Spell that.
I like it. And you had me at the word homecoming. I think that is a very warm, cozy thing. And I think you've done a masterful job of being so inclusive of all age demographics. So thank you. Thank you for doing that. I think it'll be a great event. And one that's pretty necessary.
So do we have, have any kind of approval or just tell you to give them a check? I think the consensus is give them a check. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, resolution number 6465 entitled Resolution Approving Public Access Restroom Agreement for the Pella Area Community and Economic Alliance. Mike?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for a brief presentation. And this resolution, as Mayor Duarte stated, is a proposed agreement with Pace Alliance and it's intended to provide additional restroom options, public restroom options in the central business district. It's important to note that this contract that we are discussing with Pace Alliance, it is the same contract that we discussed with council on June 21st of this year. Now, we do have highlighted on the big board the key terms of the agreement. I'll go and pick out just a few of them. A good way to look at this program, if this resolution is adopted by the Pella City Council, is this would be a trial program and the agreement itself would expire on December 31st of this year. Now, under the terms of the agreement at the Pace Alliance would be required to administer up to two additional public restrooms that would be private enterprise businesses that would allow their restrooms to be open to the general public to this under the terms of the agreement. The only, the only location that we have to date is the Dutch Fix that is located at 621 Franklin Street. It is important to note that there is a second location. The city council is required to approve that location as well. The restrooms would be open from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, six days a week, and they would have exceptions for holidays that are listed up on the big board. Now, as far as the compensation for this program, it would be $600 per month for public restroom that would be made available under the terms of the program. And more importantly, when we talk about the administration, the city would be removed from any liability associated with the restroom program and this would be administered by the Pace Alliance as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe that concludes our presentation this evening. If you have any questions, the mayor council may have on the side of them.
Alright, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
DeYoung, Brainerhorst, any discussion?
I truly appreciate your creativity and cooperation, but we can't forget this doesn't solve the problem.
Anything else? Alright, we will vote on the motion. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy? Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randorhorst?
Yes.
Anstrout?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six four six six entitled Resolution Approving Final Plaid of Lally Innovation Park. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As Mayor DeWort stated, with this resolution, we do it to approve the final plaid for the Lally Innovation Park. And as you can see, we do have a picture of the plaid listed up on the screen here, and it is located at exit forty-four, which is southwest of Highway one sixty-three, the exit forty-four interchange is the location of Lally's new corporate headquarters, North American headquarters as well. It's very important to note, the council in two thousand and twenty did approve the preliminary plaid, and we do believe that the final plaid that's being proposed this evening is in conformance with the preliminary plaid as well. But overall, when we talk about the site, it's just a, just shy of sixty-one acres as well. Now, as far as the criteria that we'll need to review this final plaid that's being proposed this evening, is the subdivision ordinance states that the, the council shall be required to make finding that the final plaid is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, the zoning, as well as our subdivision ordinances as well. So Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as council is aware, there's generally two types, well, there's only two types of plaids that we deal with. One of them's called the preliminary plaid, and you have the final plaid. The preliminary plaid is the overall game plan for the subdivision. A lot of public infrastructure is identified, at least in discussion, and it identifies how the public infrastructure will be incorporated into the plaid. The final plaid, which we are considering this evening, is the recording document that will be filed at Marion County as well. So with that, you won't see a public infrastructure located on the plaid, because it is made for land transfer, transfer purposes, is the purpose of the final plaid. It's the final document that's recorded at the county. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, we have a little bit of details that when we talk about the, the final plaid, it's also being accepted as a part of this project, and you can see those up on the big board as well. Now, when we talk about conformance with this thing, such as the comprehensive plan, we spent quite a bit of time on this. The council may recall, this property was actually rezoned to accommodate this preliminary and final plaid as well. So as far as the preliminary planning with the comprehensive plan, that was already identified by the Pella City Council as well. Now, the city attorney, the, the city's planning and zoning commission, as well as the city engineer, have reviewed these documents, and they do find that the, the plaid itself meets the minimum requirements of the city's zoning and subdivision ordinance, as well as confirms to the city's preliminary plaid, as well as the comprehensive plan. Based on these findings, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending approval of this final plaid this evening. It is also important to note, the planning and zoning commission did unanimously approve the final plaid at their April twenty-fifth meeting as well. So with that, if you have any questions, the mayor and council may have on this item.
All right, thanks, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Branderhorst, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Pose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randorhorst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Anstrout?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six four six seven entitled Resolution Approving Memorandum of Agreement with Condrey and Associates for Reviewing and Updating Classification and Compensation System. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to explain the site, and as Mayor DeWort stated, we're entertaining with this resolution as a contract with Condrey and Associates, really to perform an update and review of the city's compensation, classification and compensation system. And as we discussed on June seventh of this year with this review, the city's compensation plan was adopted in two thousand and eighteen, and industry standards generally recommend to review your compensation system every four years, which is what is being proposed with this contract this evening. It is also important to note, in addition to the four-year time period, it's just a general market review that's associated with this plan, since the two thousand and eighteen, we've also added telecommunications utility, and as Mayor DeWort introduced this evening, we also welcomed our newest department into the city, was the Pella Community Ambulance. So as a part of this review, specifically with the ambulance, they will be reviewing those positions as well for marketability, and once we do receive the results of the plan, and if that is adopted by the city council, then the ambulance employees will be placed into the city's compensation, certain classification as well. So, and we also want to make mention too, outside the boundaries of this proposed compensation review, there was part of the discussion on June seventh. One of the discussions that we had is, as part of the compensation review, there was a request to review the city's benefits as well with that. Now, what's being proposed to accommodate that request by council is our insurance broker, Cottingham and Butler is willing to provide that review to us as far as their fee for their services. So that will be going on at the same time as this external market review that Condrey has proposed to perform. So we'll have two different organizations performing it. Cottingham and Butler will be on the benefits side of things. Condrey and Associates will be on the compensation side of things. But both plans, both reviews are steadily scheduled to be completed within the sixty to ninety day time period as well. So with that, I believe, Mandy, or is that? Okay, all right. I think that concludes everything that we had. It is important to note that the fee, fee structure is the same one we talked about on June seventh at twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, which we feel is reasonable for the services that are being proposed by Condrey. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be most happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Spore and Branderhorst. Any discussion, questions, more questions?
I guess I'm a little bit wondering if, if we have two reviews that are going to be two silos, you know? I would much prefer that we were looking at a total package. And I, I didn't gather from that, are, are they going to work together and come up with a joint proposal? Or, because if we have really good salary, you know, and really good benefits, where does that, that come out when you look at, compared to everybody?
I think that's a, a question that we have now with Condrey. It is important to note that they did design our compensation review. They're very familiar with the city as well as far as their review. Cottingham and Butler have worked with the city for a number of years, and also they represent a number of cities throughout Iowa, so the benefit information that we'll be able to obtain from Condrey is going to be very comparable to other Iowa cities as well. But ultimately, when you answer your question as far as the judgment call, we're going to have to use what's being proposed as two different consultants and the information funnel on it and make a determination as far as reasonableness at the end of the day.
Liz, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, I think that that's fairly normal. I think people specialize in different areas, and so I think as long as we're getting kind of a, what's a great, you know, perspective of salaries, benchmark against different organizations, and then, and looking then also, even if it's a different study, what are other organizations, specifically governments, doing from a benefits perspective? We can kind of select and say, what, what's the difference and where's the gap that we have, and what do we want to maybe improve upon? So I, I'm in full support of this. And better than nothing, that's for sure, too. Because I think that was, we were hoping that Condrey could provide the benefits that they can't, so, yeah. I'd rather do at least one type of analysis than none, for sure.
Anything else? All right, we will vote on the motion for approval. All in favor, please say yes. Pose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
For?
Yes.
Randorhorst?
Yes.
Anstrout?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six four six eight entitled Resolution Approving Ordering Preparation Plans and Specifications Form of Contract Notice of Hearing and Notice of Letting Setting Date for Public Hearing Authorizing and Taking Bids and Authorizing Bid Opening for the West Washington Street and Five Field Road Intersection Improvements Project. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd be happy to explain this item, and the big takeaway on this item before we start with things, what we're simply doing is looking to establish a public hearing for this proposed capital improvement project. The council ordered through this resolution. You would give city staff authorization to seek bids for this project in the public hearing, which would actually be on August second of this year as well. Now, to explain this project, what we're talking about, what's being proposed is a right-hand turn lane into the Prairie Ridge development. Specifically noted the reasons for this project was the addition of the commercial development. Now, looking at the map that we have here, or the picture overview that we have here, you can see Washington Street is located down here. Our newly constructed Five Field Road is located up here. Now, it is important to note, when we approved the preliminary plaid for both the residential piece at Prairie Ridge, as well as the commercial development, we also performed a traffic analysis, and that traffic analysis was done in two components, both on the residential side as well as the commercial side. Now, ultimately, with the addition of the two entities named in the Smash Park and proposed Chick-fil-A that is proposed to be opened up later this fall, the traffic analysis called for eventually this intersection to be signalized, with the first improvement being proposed would be this right-hand turn lane that we are considering with this project as well. Now, overall, when you look at the engineer's opinion, the probable cost is just under ninety thousand dollars for the right-hand turn lane into the development. The council ordered to approve this project. The bid letting for the project will be on July twenty-seventh. We hopefully have a contract for council's consideration on August second. And we'll be looking at issuing a notice to proceed on the project if approved on August second, and right around August fifteenth, the final completion schedule for that this year as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that really concludes our presentation this evening. We'd be most happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Hopkins? DeYoung? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Pose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randorhorst?
Yes.
Anstrout?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six four six nine, Resolution Approving Ordering the Preparation of Plans and Specifications Form of Contract Notice of Hearing and Notice of Letting Setting Date for Public Hearing Authorizing and Taking Bids and Authorizing Bid Opening for the airport, or the apron expansion project at the Pella Municipal Airport. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Once again, this is a very similar request to what we consider with the proposed right-hand turn lane on the Five Field Road and on Washington Street leading into Five Field Road. What this particular project deals with is the proposed apron expansion at the current Pella Municipal Airport, and we do have a diagram of the proposed apron expansion on there, listed on the big board, as well as a description of both the base bid and the alternate bid that's being proposed with this project as well. Mandy, if we could please move along. Now, as far as the engineer's opinion of probable cost, the base bid is just over six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If we were to expand and go to the alternate bid, which is an expansion of the project, it would be an additional two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, which means that we'd be looking at a total slump sum of just shy of eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. But once again, please keep in mind, all you're simply doing by approving this resolution is authorizing city staff to solicit bids for this project, and you're also establishing the public hearing date for the project, which would be conducted on August second as well. Council ordered to approve a contract on that evening. We issued a notice to proceed on this project, which would be August fifteenth. That's a little bit confusing here when we talk about working days, but the project ultimately, ultimately calls for about forty-five, a working day completion on it, which means the completion date would be scheduled for yet this fall as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city staff presentation. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Branderhorst, for, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Pose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randorhorst?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Anstrout?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. I get a motion for approval on abstract bills number two one zero six.
Move to approve and issue warrants.
For?
Branderhorst, Hopkins, any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Pose no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randorhorst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Anstrout?
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business you would like us to address this evening? We do have some policy and planning, a couple closed sessions yet, but... Okay, any member of the public have any business that you would like to address the council with this evening? If so, please step to the microphone, state your name and address, and please try to limit your count into three minutes.
My name is Anita Fisher, fifteen forty-six Pleasant Drive. What you have in front of you, there's another book at the library. Now, what I find extremely disturbing is that we go to so much work as fellow residents to make things look great. Look at all these things we have planned, wonderful things, but we're missing the weightier matters in life, our children. Our children should matter the most, correct? If you look at this page, wait what? That's the book for children. It's in our library. Look at the second page. If you've got angina, breast development, vaginal discharge, all this stuff for children to look at. Is that okay for your child to pick up from the library? You guys are paying for it. Do you want to pay for your children to see that? And the next page? It says, it's a whole bunch of genitals. Yeah. You want your children to see all kinds of genitals? Go to the next page. Oh, looky here. Sizes, shapes and colors. What this is, is kind of a dot-to-dot for our children, so they can learn how to draw these genitals. Do you want to pay for your children to learn how to draw genitals? I don't think so. The next page? All kinds of pictures of genitals, once again. It's in our library, folks. Do you not find this even the slightest bit offensive? You're trying so hard to make, to make Pella grand and great. It is, but what about the weightier matters of our children? The children are our future. No child needs to have this in front of them at a young and delicate age. Going on? Why? It's not sex. It's just messing around. Is that what we want to teach our children? It's not sex, it's messing around. This is in our library, guys. And then finally, we've got a sexual orientation crossword in the back. In the back. Is this something you would put in front of your children? Here, kiddo, here's a crossword puzzle you can work on. A short word that describes being only or mostly attracted to people of a different gender than yourself. This is grooming, guys. Can you not see this is grooming for the children? It's important that you guys know that this is what's happening. Men are supposed to take a stand for their children. They are supposed to protect children. City councilmen, not only are you supposed to protect children, as our leadership, you should be protecting the community's children. So far, we have done nothing. You have allowed all of this. Shame on you. You are going to have to answer to the Lord one day, and he will ask you, why did you not protect my babies, my children, from this filth? You're going to have to answer for that. I think you should think about that. In the meantime, think hard and long about the, what the consequences might be for our children. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we will adjourn to a policy and planning session. We have four items to discuss. We'll start with the residential parking requirements in the central business district. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We'd be happy to explain this item, and as Mayor DeWort stated, what we're talking about is residential parking requirements in the central business district. Now, when we talk about the residential central business district, we're generally talking about the area that you see that's highlighted up here on the big board, here that has the different zones here, different streets that are located in the central business district. Now, as far as parking requirements are a concern in the central business district, it's generally, and we're, well, actually, the city code doesn't generally, it states that off-street parking shall be provided for any new building constructed for new use, for subversions of existing buildings, or for enlargements of existing structures. It's important to note that non-residential uses in the central business district are exempt from off-street parking requirement. However, when it comes to residential uses... However, when it comes to residential uses in the central business district, single-family residential uses must provide two spaces for a fully unit onsite. That's the key takeaway as far as it applies to tonight's discussion. And then also, the city code also says residential uses are only allowed on the second floor or above if you're located here in the central business district as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as council is aware, this request originally came to us from Scott and Jenna Sales that operate the group in Barham, New Orleans, as located at the old City Hall building, that is right at seven seventeen Main Street. Now, one of the items that they've had as far as the renovation of the building is when you look at renovating the building and expanding the use to residential uses as well, the city code requirements for parking applies to this building, or when you look at the building as, is it does not currently have any off-site parking or onsite parking for that to satisfy the city's off-site parking requirements. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as options are concerned, the planning and zoning commission did discuss options for city council's consideration. We also have the input of the city attorney as well as city staff, so it's somewhat of a mixed list that we have listed up here on the big board. All righty. So option number one would be simply to do nothing, keep parking requirements the same, and there is so. There'd be no change to code. No residential units could be in the central business district unless onsite parking is provided. Number two would be to eliminate the requirement for residential units in the central business district to provide parking. On this, what we would simply do at that point is you would just enforce parking regulations in the central business district on it as well. And so with that, we want to make sure that we had the input on the police department as far as enhanced, I'd say, traffic parking, parking enforcements in the central business district as well. Now, some of these items that we have listed from this point forward, I believe, came from the planning and zoning commission. One of them was, option number three was to change the code requirement to require only one onsite parking per residential dwelling unit in the central business district. This would only apply to pre-existing buildings. Now, with that, I'm not sure that that solves the issue at hand through seven seventeen Main Street, so please keep that in mind. Option number four would allow residential dwelling unit corrigions to be able to lease one parking space onsite if unable to provide one onsite. How we would administer this is the city staff would keep track of leases in the downtown. And if you were in the central business district, we probably have, Jerry, I think what you guys were talking about is the lease would have to be in the central business district, so someone that had access parking in the central business district that would be able to lease that to satisfy that requirement. And option number five, the planning and zoning commission, again, for new apartments or multifamily construction, change the city code to require onsite, one onsite parking space for a studio or one-bedroom apartments, two onsite parking spaces for two or three-bedroom units. Now, ultimately, Mr. Mayor, we're seeking council direction on this item, but before we get to that, Jerry, that was a very brief presentation that we had. Is there anything else that was discussed at the planning and zoning commission or that we failed to mention for council's consideration this evening?
No, you were very comprehensive in your presentation. This is a difficult and tricky subject. You have existing buildings downtown that don't have parking, and why they're allowed to be built, we don't know, but they go back many years. And you have all the new development that's coming downtown, like the Bull and Gruff, had to provide parking. So unfortunately, this business owner's caught in the middle, but this is not an easy situation to address. But we do have multitude of possibilities, and planning and zoning commission spent several weeks discussing this, and you have the best of what they could come up with at this point in time for you.
We have a couple of bed and breakfasts downtown now. What are they doing about parking?
They're not providing it. Because it's not required.
So, so these are a bunch of options. Did P and Z have a recommendation?
Correct. The P and Z has recommended these to you along with city staff and the, and Mike and I.
So what we have, I'm not sure there's a main recommendation. I can tell you that the first two items that we had up here that came from city staff, one was to do nothing. That always is the city staff will make sure that's an option, considered. Option number two, that actually came from city staff on this, is just to eliminate the parking requirements as far as an option, rely on parking enforcement in the downtown, let the chips fall where they may on it as well. So those first two options, really, we just, that came from city staff as options to consider as we work on this process. Three, four, and five came from the planning and zoning commissions, and those were the ones that presented, but also that passed muster with the city attorney as far as what they're recommending as well, so.
You know, from the beginning of this whole journey, which Gina did spend a year and a half, perhaps, maybe some more, you know, I keep falling back to option number two, because we're becoming a walkable community. And I think, why would we say someone has to have a car to live downtown? And then I also flip back to my, my world, working at the C O C for years and years and years, and individuals with disabilities often don't have cars, and they rely on Perta or other friends or someone to pick them up. So it's, I just don't understand why we are forcing people to buy a vehicle in order to live downtown. It just, to me, it doesn't make sense, and it just doesn't seem inclusive to everyone or residentially very friendly to those that choose to live downtown. The other one that if we are going to force it, I don't underst, I think number four is also a good option, where if someone really has to have a car, they can lease a parking space or some, someplace to park their vehicle offsite. Those would be the two that I would lean towards.
Yeah, I lean that way, too. I lean towards two, just eliminating it. But I do think the ability to lease is important if you two have that option. As someone who lived above...
I remember that.
Yeah, that, but I didn't have access to a parking spot because I didn't own the building. So I just, I think to have the option, that is good. That'd be a nice thing for our community, but I, I lean towards two as well.
Yep.
Has the retail community chimed in on this at all, on whether that's taking up parking spots or not?
We've had discussions with Pace Alliance, but we, to say, we haven't solicited their official opinion yet. And we thought before we reached out and asked for an official response from an organization like the Pace Alliance on this, we'd want to get the direction of the city council before we did that.
Because there's the other, there's the Downtown Alliance, too, right?
Yeah, there's the Downtown.
I, I just think it would be good to have their input as part of this, you know, in the mix at the same time, actually. That might help us, you know, know which direction to that. I tend to like, on the surface, like, like four, you know, to provide a parking spot that they can, that can be leased.
Chief, how much, how much parking enforcement is being done now downtown?
Well, it's kind of important to remember, you know, not too long ago, Miles was just throwing marking tires with chalk, and since a long time, that's been the method, not to belate the issue, but court rulings and all that stuff prohibited marking with chalk kind of forced us to take a different parking enforcement approach. We used some forfeiture funds to buy some pretty high-technology actuary, which does a lot of things for crime fighting, but one of the things it also does as a license plate reader is we can, we can do parking enforcement actually quite effectively. As a reminder, it's a placeholder in the C I P, not this company, but the Cyclical, the next one, at, at two. And as a reminder, that's a license plate that's permanently attached to a car. It's not something we can take out and move to different vehicles. I think we've got most of the bugs worked out of it finally. Took a little while to figure it out, but the end around to that is I don't think parking enforcement is going to be an issue there. In fact, I think we're probably doing better than we ever have based on, on the technology.
And really, the, practically, the, the risk is simply just during the day when there's potentially people that really want to be downtown. Obviously, it's from whatever, from ten to eight a.m., it's not even really a thing. It's generally empty, so it's more, to Calvin's point, what, you know, what's the downtown businesses think? And how can we come up with one of these solutions that works for everybody?
And then there's the bug of Louis Stone removal.
Yep.
I favor two also, but I sympathize with public work, and we snow removal promptly and well.
But there's, there's, uh, snow ordinances.
Snow ordinance would apply just like our...
Vehicles need to be removed anyway.
That is true.
I can tell you, this is a, I've had an office in downtown Pelham for thirty-eight years. This goes back thirty-eight years of this guy. And there was a lot of ire back in the day, just from an office, if you had an office downtown, parking on the street in front of your office, made a lot of people mad in the retail business. And so if we add residential parking downtown in the business district, I just want you to anticipate some ire from retailers. So this, because I, I think, I think we could monitor probably with enforcement, but there will not be, there will be sent on happiness, because people complain about parking anyway. And if you are in this town on any given day of the week, most of spots are filled, so.
And an upside is, a lot of small towns, you drive through, the second story is vacant all the way around the square, whereas here it's occupied.
Right, right.
A big deal.
Could we, could we lease some of our public parking areas to a resident? You know, and reserve so many slots that are either by the town, or by the, the town crier, and our public's built the lot right here that, I know it's a walk for those folks, but at least they would have a place to park always, because we're competing with the goal, we want to encourage downtown housing as well.
And also, is this, do we then look at other, other addresses that have residences? The, you know, we're, we're looking at that not just for one particular address, but for all downtown dwellings now and future?
If you mess with the ordinance, it's for everybody.
I like, practically, I like four from a, I guess, to, to Don's point. Just if there's, if there's at least available, you know, for various people to need it, then that at least softens that blow, I suppose, but...
Well, I've heard, I think I heard two number twos, a couple number fours. We need to give direction here, and we need to act, so that everybody that's been waiting for fourteen months goes, proceeding, proceeding. So not all decisions are easy or fun, but we need to make one here, I think.
Gina, let me ask you this, because you and I have almost talked about this issue.
Sure.
We have beat it up and, to the best of our abilities, that number four, would you be willing to get off-site parking if it allowed you to live above your business? Would that, would that be a stretch for you? Because your, your situation is quite unique.
Yeah.
It's very unique, because there's no ability for you to park. And so you're, and as a person that owns a business, I mean, oftentimes, you're there all hours.
Right.
Seven days a week.
Right.
And so that's, that makes it very unique for you. Would it be difficult, or would it be a stretch if we adopted number four for you to find off-site parking?
No, we actually have it. We have a rented spot in Mall and Gruff.
Okay. And you have a lot of children, too. So then, when they each get a car, then, then you would have to find parking for them, which you'd probably get quite crafty at it after about the second or third, in a good way, crafty.
Yeah, you know, when you're a business owner downtown, I understand what the mayor's saying about being an office, but we offer a retail service. I mean, we put thirty to forty customers through our shop a day.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we are not interested in taking our parking. We actually find that if we were to say, when would we use our car if we didn't have to drive to and from work? Once we're downtown, we're really quite happy. We don't need, so to park a couple blocks away would be perfectly fine. In the winter, when we were here, and then a snowstorm would come, we really didn't have any problem pulling into a meter spot in Mall and Gruff. We just obviously plugged the meter and paid for it. Obviously, we didn't get any tickets for the winter. I mean, we had vehicles here, and we are doing just fine.
Yep.
It just simply would be a matter of making that we could actually create that as a residential use. I honestly don't want my children to come back with their cars.
Yeah, I get it.
That's okay with me.
But you want them to come back for the homecoming.
That's right, but when you're an office.
Exactly.
What, what, Jerry, you mentioned that there are several buildings downtown that have upper-level residents that do not have any parking now.
Correct.
Does a code change trigger those, those buildings to meet a new require? Obviously, they did meet a requ, I don't know what the requirement was.
They would reconsider grandfathered, the only thing that would trigger this is if they by chance had to enlarge it or expand it or renovate it substantially. This would also allow, if you went with number four, the ability for any other building downtown that currently has an under-used third floor to put a residential meter in and lease a space offsite. You could potentially open up a little more downtown housing.
Well, that would be a good thing in my mind.
Yeah. The one, the one thing that, this is a little bit, number four is a, maybe, it's harder to monitor than number two. So two, if, you know, just if it was patrol officers, you know, checking license plates, we know that we can monitor that on a regular basis. Four, tenants move in and out, whatever, you know, what's the, and who's, who's, who's monitoring the lease agreements that each one of the buildings have for, for parking spaces? That makes it, I, I feel like four would actually end up being two, just because it would make it really hard to, to monitor who, who's, what department's in charge of monitoring personal leases for parking spaces.
Yeah, I think it's, it would fall back on, well, I'm not going to make any friends with that answer. But you're correct, it would be individual administrative work, so.
Right. And, and use two overnight after business hours.
And, you know, if we implement number four, patrol officers, we're not going to stop monitoring parking, you know, in downtown, so.
I don't, I don't know how many off-site leasable spaces there are.
Exactly.
Well, where, where can you lease parking in Pelham other than Mall and Gruff?
I'll, I'll lease a spot on the road in front of my house.
Well, as we said, do, do we, as a city, have to be more friendly and do some of our regular parking lots? And say, we will assist, you know, people that want to move there. We're going to reserve ten of those spots to be for folks that are living up there. And I, I, I think that's a good compromise, if, I know we're going to, you know, give up spots for the regular folks coming in to and fro, but we, we want to encourage downtown housing as well.
And I think that there, currently, there are individuals, I know of several, that have residences that don't hold all their vehicle um, have residences that don't hold all their vehicle and then vehicles, and then they lease spots elsewhere, so.
Privately.
Yes, yes.
Maybe, maybe at the new mini storage that passed the zoning for.
Of course, yeah.
With shuttle service.
Well, Bob did talk about a shuttle service the other night.
Yeah, just to be clear on, on the parking and leasing, I think it's, you know, if we wanted to go down the route of making some of our lots open to leasing, where it may get a little tricky is if you, you said it's going to be reserved for a certain property type on it, you may be forced to say, these spaces are just leased, first come, first served, according to city policy, this, this owns, so, we did say that those spots could be leased on it, may not necessarily be able to put conditions on residential property owners only.
Yeah, four to me doesn't make any sense, but. I think it's either two or two would, it's either one or two.
I'm going to go back to my original statement, I think that number two is very all-inclusive, it's very friendly to all age demographics, facility demographics, and if somebody has a car and they need to find someplace else to park it, then they can do so. And if they don't, then they're going to get a ticket. But we, you know, we have, we're making this a very blockable community.
Two. Are we anywhere near consensus?
Well, we always say two.
I could look at the two, you know, if, if we find a few, too much abuse, we can change it later.
Or there's, there's lots of tickets that are going out.
All right.
The retailers aren't going to be happy no matter what you do.
Just to, I think we have our direction, but, but, did you want to hear from ACE Alliance and the Downtown Restore Retail Group before we make any recommendations? Or do we just go through the hearing process and let Tom know if there are concerns?
I did, I did find, if, to go that route and do a special invite to them to come and speak at, at that.
Fair enough.
We want to reach out to those folks one way or another.
All right.
Dale have a comment?
I don't know whether you people are aware of, if you people have a good problem. I drive from here to the Missouri line and I see towns that gladly change places with you to have a parking problem, so I think it'd be a boon for you to address it and address it quickly and furiously.
Yep, so true, it's a good problem to have, traffic in the park. But I think, I guess, combination of eliminating the requirement, but enhancing the enforcement, I think that would, based on my experience, would help in discussion with downtown retailers. I think enhancing the, the enforcement.
Would want to make sure that this is for existing buildings downtown and not any proposed new apartment buildings?
Yeah.
New, new buildings?
If we had a new apartment building coming to town, that they would have to provide on-site parking. Because if we had a hundred unit building come in close to downtown, we would have a.
Yeah, yeah.
Missionary.
Yeah.
But I, I guess I don't want to, if there's a third floor of existing building that they, they want to renovate to an apartment, and now they can because of this.
Correct.
We don't want to discourage that.
No, absolutely not.
Just new construction, an entire building.
Correct.
Okay. Okay? All right, we're moving on to regulations for private signage in the public right-of-way.
I guess Mr. Mayor would be happy to explain this item, this item tonight, that comes to us from Historic Pella Trust, or this request rather, and specifically it's a request to discuss allowing private signs in the public right-of-way, and the easiest way to explain this item is currently under the zoning code, there's a process for allowing private signs, or identified process for allowing private signs in the public right-of-way. With that, that is held out in the zoning code, however, in two thousand and three, the city council passed a resolution that basically forbid any new signs or private signs being placed in the public right-of-way, so we have somewhat of a conflict under city code, and by and large, the way we've been operating over the years is the resolution that was passed in two thousand and three. So with this request tonight, and Mr. Bob Zalster is here to talk about the, the request from the, from the tele, tele cabinet, and you can see the sign that is located upon the big board, but ultimately, we feel since there is code that conifies the language in the zoning code, ultimately, if council would like us to refer this item to the planning and zoning commission to have them research it and review and come back with a recommendation, we'd be happy to do that, um, but ultimately, we're looking to rectify or at least to discuss once again, our practices, which is by and large been involved in the resolution that was passed in two thousand and three. I'm going to ask both Jerry and also Danny to give me their perspective on this issue. So Jerry, go ahead first.
Correct, uh, current zoning code allows wafering signs, so institutions, emergency services, hospitals, historic establishments, et cetera, to place signs in the public right-of-way upon permit of sign ordinance, and that's allowed. The resolution that council passed several years ago, uh, basically outlawed that, so we have an ordinance that says you can do it, you have a resolution that says you can't, and in this case, we have conflict, so we need to fix it.
Danny, would you like to offer your comments on signs in the public right-of-way?
I, I think the best way to explain it, yes, Danny, why did we mess with it in oh three, and I don't know why, but you remember some of that, there was a lot of sign clutter around town.
Yeah.
That's before my time, there was still clutter when I came in, in oh seven, but.
Churches, schools, everybody was.
Everything, college, we had signs pointing to everything, a lot of clutter. And, and also, in my world, where it comes to play is our SVP money, which is federal dollars, that's divvied out through the state, but the federal highway watches it, they don't allow private signs in public right-of-way along your federal aid grounds, which are Washington, Main, Oskaloosa, and others. So, so they somewhat eliminated, and part of that was too, they were viewed as obstruction way back then, now we've all got smarter, almost all signs in public right-of-way are tele-spark, the ones with holes in all the sites, so they break away real easy. But with that said, the federal highway and the state will actually allow private signs in public right-of-way and community if you develop a way finding signing policy. That policy must be, signs are similar in size, similar font, similar color, and you also make a list of who's allowed. Now, in my fifteen years there, I had George try to bring forward two or three times, and it died on the vine for some pretty obvious reason, we got to the list of who's going to be allowed. And shortly after George left, we realized that five years was now up, it was time to release this thing, in my department, we went out and removed everything that was in non-compliance. And to this day, I still have a couple churches, and I can name churches and people that call me an atheist, for taking their signs on the rise. So, if Bob's sign pops back up, I can tell you two churches I would get a call within a week. And they'll probably just put them up under darkness, and say, okay.
Bob, what, what size is that sign?
It's a two foot by three foot.
So if we would pass an ordinance that said you can have a two foot by three foot sign that's brown and white, is that?
That's the policy, that's correct. But this, this is the sign you see everywhere, and this is the same size as the hospital signs that you have around town, the direction finding, I mean, they're this size. I was amazed at how big they were, but this is what they look like. If you go through communities all over, they're, they have much of a weight at all of tourist visit, you see these kinds of signs highlighting, you know, where you find, and direction finding has been an issue for our, our sites here in town anyway, and this just makes it really difficult. And right now, for Historic Pella Trust, the only way you could use this is to put it on private property. So going down the street where we want, they have, it's a thirty-foot street, seventy-foot right-of-way, I think, so we'd have to put twenty feet off the street, and that's all of a sudden, it's out of the line of sight for drivers, and all of a sudden, it's of almost no use.
Well, the key is how high do you mount it so it doesn't obstruct the view of.
The ordinance covers all that, I mean, the things that Danny talked about in the policy, your existing ordinance covers it, so what's.
There's other rules too, at the bottom of it, it has to be seven feet high, so somebody can cut their head off, that's true for both sides.
Right, but if it takes a little bit of amendment, most of the things that you're talking about are in an ordinance, it's a nicely written ordinance, so I'm going to put some work into that. Now, two thousand and three, that gets real close, my brother signed that, that, so now I said, now I got a, got a brother, he should go with this.
I learned.
But, but it's a, it's a policy that served its purpose, and it, and it's probably time to move on, be my.
Wayfinding is pathetic.
It is horrible.
Somewhere. Oski's got us deep three ways from the middle.
Yep, you know, and so I think some of, we just simply make, there's lots of organizations, I know the Historic Society, there are lots of places that would like to help do some of these wayfinding things, and it just, it just, you just can't do it right now.
Somewhere in oh eight, oh nine, somewhere near, George got as far as, we actually had RDG do a study of wayfinding signage, and a couple of their recommendations have actually have been followed through in downtown at the morning, and everybody liked the sign when they had five, six things on each of these signs, and then the part of the recommendation, how big are those signs? Well, they were five by eight or five by nine, I know there, some of them were five by nine because they had, like, two sheets of plywood, I don't know if you remember, we painted them black and we posted them down there on Roosevelt Road, and everybody's like, whoa, those are like billboards, why would we need those? You know, in this day and age, we've evolved too with GPS and MapQuest, I argue with all the younger generations, they're not looking at signs anymore, they're looking at the phone.
I look for the signs to be here today, I don't know where it's going.
Your job, you're not the shit.
But you know, in, in twenty years, you may need to change it again, but it seems for now, a lot of this kind of thing, already drives, makes.
So there's an ordinance, and then, there's an ordinance that allowed, then the resolution eliminate, or trump the ordinance?
So what we would do is we would take this back to planning and zoning, recommend modifications to the existing sign ordinance, part of them, when it came back to council, we would eliminate the resolution and adopt new ordinance.
That's if the recommendation, they would review them, the whole issue, and come back with a recommendation.
So, so Danny, did I hear you right, part of that state or federal, that the colors have to be the same?
We'd have to run the whole policy through federal highway.
Okay.
Somebody through the state that works with federal highway to make sure, at risk for us, is two, like, two hundred and fifteen thousand a year comes to us through federal funding, and they're real sticklers, back when we did the overlay, the Obama money, we weren't touching anything outside the gutter, and they made us do, I don't know, seventeen or twenty-seven handicap ramps on sidewalks, even though we were doing milling overlay. So they, they catch things like that, it's, to me, so we need to stay compliant, but they do have the door open for a policy, and then, like I say, the hard part is the list, because all the schools want in on, I'll start, you know, elementary, Christian schools, colleges, hospitals are regulatory, they're in the lists of love.
Yeah, and I can attest to, when we did this back, and, you know, time flies when you're having fun back in two thousand and nine, the program that was initially posed to the city council is a very modest wayfinding program, and then, once it got to the committee and everybody started putting a wish list on who wanted to be on the signs, and then you started looking at, well, people are actually going to read that many names on the signs going X miles per hour, and that led to bigger signs, lutherous signs, and pretty soon it just became unmanageable, and that's why it never got off dead center.
That's an excellent part, I forgot that part, that's how we got to a five by nine, you had six people listed, and everybody wanted, you know, six inch font, and there was like this, and.
How, how did a resolution get passed in direct conflict with an ordinance?
I'm actually, well, I don't want to comment on this, but I would say is that was the city attorney's guidance at, at the time, uh, for the city, and so, that's what was commonly.
I'd say it wasn't Christine.
No, and, and I think we don't, wait, the, the city attorney would, would rule now on it, but we've traditionally followed with the resolution, since that's the latest legislative action passed, and so, we think, I think the takeaway with this, there is an apparent conflict between the resolution and the ordinance, and the fact that it's a conflict, you know, our recommendation would be if council wants to follow up on it, considering the site, let's refer to the planning and zoning commission for review.
Okay.
Good.
So how long do I have to wait before we put the sign up? Just checking.
Ask Gina.
When time flies, ground's broken.
This year? I mean, these, by the way, these really become really complicated issues, and you ought to find a way to make it a lot simpler, more straightforward.
Yep.
And even, even on the issue of, we have to have a policy, go find somebody that's already passed muster with the, the state or federal DOT, make a copy of it and use it, I mean, this, we just make these things horribly worse, and Gina's been through it, and a lot of the other, you know that, and just got to find a way to cut through some of this if you possibly can. And the suggestion on things like resolution, that resolution, I think, was passed for very good reason, but I think it was an issue of policy, you ought to make sure they sunset, you ought to sunset in six or nine months, and then either draft them as an ordinance or move on, just, just an old engineer's opinion, so thank you.
Okay, moving on to the residential solar systems.
Okay, another planning and zoning item that we have actually, ultimately, the, the decision on the process of planning and zoning on this as well, this request actually comes this night from the Board of Adjustment, and what they're requesting is a zoning ordinance amendment that would allow residential solar systems that are not located in a design review district to be approved administratively, no one talking about a residential solar system, which you see often times with roof-mounted solar systems, right, and that, such as was pictured up here on the big board. Now, explaining this item, currently, city code requires all residential or solar energy systems greater than a hundred square feet on residential lots to come before the Board of Adjustment for a special use permit on that, and what's being proposed by the Board of Adjustments is if you have a residential homeowner that's proposing a solar system that's greater than a hundred square feet, that those can be administratively approved by, I believe, the zoning administrator from, um, the zoning aspect of this as well, but these would only be for areas that are not in the design review district, so this would be the downtown, the gateway quarter districts, which would be Washington Street, Oskaloosa Street, and Main Street on this as well, I believe, are the, the gateway areas and the areas that would be subject to design review, and we would probably, and I think the intent of this too, Jerry, is any type of historic preservation district as well, you would not be, they would still be required to have a special use permit to allow that as well. So Jerry, um, and I would also like to stress that this is just the zoning side of things, and people are looking at establishing a solar energy system, they're also required to have a distributed generation agreement with the city of Pella or Electric Utility as well to allow for, for the solar energy system, so there's more processes on the electrical side of things, but Jerry, is there anything else to explain this request?
No, it's just, excuse me, it's just that the solar energy is becoming more prevalent, prevalent, especially now here in Iowa, we recently, we're actually just contacted today by a nationwide solar distributor company that will be starting to ignore our sales of solar systems in Pella, so it's coming, and, and what this is, is we've had five systems in the last seven months, we have another hearing tomorrow night to do these, uh, the Board of Adjustment really felt that it was not really in their purview to be approving these, uh, even though it says so in the code, they're administrative in many, many jurisdictions, but if you meet the base criteria, then again, this would be residential roof mount, ground mount would still require a special use permit because most of the, uh, concerns of the citizens of Pella have been expressed for ground mount solar systems, if it's in a historic preservation district, we require it should be, any of the design quarter or district require it should be, uh, so we're covering anywhere that may be visually upfront, uh, to this, but in just general residential system, uh, it would be approved at staff level. One of the best analogies from the board member was, we can allow you to put pink roofing tile on your house if you want, but we can't let you put a solar system on, so that was just one of the comments, is we don't control the type of building or roofing anybody puts on our home in Pella, but yet we would restrict this, so it's kind of the way we look, we're just trying to.
I'm going to find the woman that got shot.
Please, please leave your phone, please manage your phone, we're all hearing your conversation. Okay? That makes sense.
Okay, now the second will be delegated, Planning and Zoning Commission as well, so, okay?
Okay.
Last item that we had, Mr. Mayor, is just a proposed dental plan renewal, want to state upfront, city employees, if they participate in the city's dental insurance plan, they pay a hundred percent of the cost of the plan through the premiums charged on the plan, and Delta Dental is proposing as a five percent premium increase, if approved on August first is when this would be effective, so we'd be considering this at our July nineteenth meeting, the premiums. Premiums would increase by five, five percent. And you can see what the impact would be for single coverage as well as family coverage as well. Once again, this is an item that's paid for a hundred percent by city employees. And that is the recommended increase for the plan as well. So the five percent is just simply passing the cost on, the actual cost of the plan to the city employees. So before presenting this for formal consideration, we want to make sure we answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Quite a few people take advantage of it.
Whatever. I can give you an estimate, but I prefer if I can get that information out of the email as far as, you know, what the participation rates are on it.
I know some of these plans don't really cover much more than a routine cleaning.
Used to be about half of the city employees were on the dental insurance, but we'll reaffirm that as well.
Yeah, so you get the resolution on the agenda. All right, do I have a motion? We're in enter into a closed session, so do I have a motion to enter in the closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter twenty-one point five, one C, discuss strategy with council on matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation?
Don't move.
For it. Brander Horace Hopkins, all in favor, please say yes. opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brander Horace?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spoor?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeAnstra?
Yes.
Motion passed. So we are going into closed session. No one has a motion coming from our closed session. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn, I'll move.
Spoor.
Hopkins, Spoor.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spoor?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brander Horace?
Yes.
DeAnstra?
Maybe.